Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to this public work session of the Mawa Board of Education. Due to the current government declared emergency, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education has limited availability for members of the public to be present. Procedures for members of the public that wish to participate in person, including opportunities to email questions in advance of the meeting, can be found on our website. As an alternative to ensure transparency of board business and meet guidelines by the New Jersey Association of Public Services, the board meeting will also be available to the public as soon. Members of the public may also call into the meeting using the following number: During the public portion of this meeting, members of the public will be given the opportunity to participate verbally with the board. All participants must provide their name and address and are reminded to follow participation rules if it related in board policies 0167. Would you please take a role?
Mr. Go. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski. Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Dr. Morphy.
Here.
And Ms. Fair.
Here. A quick notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News at the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on November 11th, 2020, in the administrative offices at the Kuyang Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Everyone please rise for a seat to the flag. Ms. Ziccone, you'd like to lead us, and if I could please ask everyone to please stand afterwards and remain for a moment of silence for all of the students. Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone very much. We're deceiving. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no more than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I please have a motion to open the meeting to the public? It is Conoco, second by Mr. Gallo.
Ms. Fair, we will just leave the disportionment for a few moments to see if anybody types in through the chat or raises their hand to speak. Or of course, if there's any members of the public.
Present.
Present.
Thank you for coming.
Ms. Fair, I do not see anything coming through on the chat or any raised hands from attendees that are logged into the meeting right now.
May I please have a motion to close to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morphy. Dr. Fitz, do you have a report for us this evening? Thank you.
I would like to say we value our partnership with our students. Our mission is to meet both the academic and social and emotional needs of our students. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
We value our partnership with our entire school community. They've been most responsive to us. Our mission is to meet both the academic and social and emotional needs of our students and to educate them to become productive, well-balanced, responsible citizens who respect individual differences and diversity. We are far on the way of accomplishing that mission. Nothing is more important, however, than the safety of our students and our staff. We are taking every precautionary measure that we can take so that we can accomplish this task of keeping our students and our faculty safe. We are participating in all of the school events that we can participate in according to the guidelines that we have provided. We are proceeding very well under the given circumstances that we are living with daily.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bleeker, do you have a report to ask for?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Two items to bring to members of the public that are attending or participating through Zoom webinar. There are two items that were added to the agenda subsequent to the agenda being posted earlier this week. For a matter of record and for the benefit of those that are attending electronically, I will read those two agenda items into the record. The one is item 15S. This is an additional conference workshop item. It's on page six of the agenda. Ms. Allison Bowden, to attend conference workshop AAC training for the paraprofessional, part two. Date to attend is December 1st, the amount $75. The other agenda item is agenda item 16G. This is an NJFLA leave of absence. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Mawa Board of Education approves a leave of absence for employee number 4757, effective retroactive on November 10th, 2020 to February 5th, 2021, using NJFLA from November 10th, 2020 to February 5th, 2021. Those are the only two items that were added subsequent to the agenda being posted earlier this week. The other item to report on is the superintendent search process. After our last board meeting, the members of the board met an executive session with members from RPAS Solutions, the firm that is assisting us with the superintendent search process. That process is going to be beginning very shortly. There will be an ad for the superintendent published in the newspaper beginning this weekend, Star Ledger on Sunday, November 15th. It would also be run again on November 29th and December 13th. The window to submit an application is going to be beginning again this weekend when the ad first runs. December 18th will be the final day to submit an application for superintendent. Then in January, after our board reorganizes, we will then have some interviews scheduled to continue the process.
Yes, I do. The first is an announcement of a retirement for Pepe Gardner, who is an instructional paraprofessional at Joyce Comer School. She's been with us for 18 years and two months. On the surface, if you know Pepe, she is no nonsense. Beneath that no nonsense, there is a heart of gold and the most caring person by her everyday actions. Pepe's candid perspective and genuine concern for her students and colleagues makes her shine. Pepe has an extraordinary talent in working with struggling learners. She always goes above and beyond her assigned duties with the goal of fully supporting the needs of students. Thank you for your years of dedication and service to the many students and colleagues you've connected with during your years here supporting students in Mawa, Pepe. You most certainly will be missed, and we wish you much luck in your new adventures with family and friends, and especially your new grandchild. Special highlight to our Mawa High School Guidance Department, Megan Beatty, Stacy Mandell, Rayhan Jalil, our new school counselor, Jesse Struck, Joan Stewart, along with the assistants of Nancy Mariani and Denise Wright, and led by Dominic Gliot, our director of guidance. Our November 1st applications are out, and we had 126 seniors submit 553 early action applications. And in addition, 60.5% of the class have already submitted 1,022 applications. So we are proud of the department's efforts. We are proud of our kids, and we wish great success to our students during this application cycle. All right, the next piece is a follow-up to our November 4th email that was submitted to our Mawa community from our administrative team that was titled Phase One and Review. But the purpose of this notification was to provide our school community with our work to date. And some families have reached out with concerns regarding our considerations to close. So while we do not have intentions to close our in-person learning, but we do understand that we are in a public health-related pandemic. And due to this reality, our school district must be cognizant of all things related to school operations, including COVID-19 data reported in and around the Mawa area, and we must also properly staff our buildings and follow the governor's executive orders. So with that said, we have been meeting with our school nurses regularly. And just last week, we met with our district physician along with all seven of our school nurses to review the status of our schools currently. To date, we can report that no identified COVID-19 positive cases have been transmitted inside any of our school buildings, so it's great news. And what is optimal and what is worthy of note is we have a system and a cleaning procedure in place that is working, and our students are learning. So that's great news. From a safety perspective, we are scheduled to meet with our medical stakeholders group, which is inclusive of our school nurses and district, as well as medical experts and professional doctors and registered nurses who are parents in the Mawa community. So that meeting is taking place tomorrow. At this time, we will review our current safety measures and practices to see what is working in district, what is working effectively, while also seeing where we can ever improve. From a curricular perspective, our parent advisory council will be meeting next week, which is exciting for the first time, and it's been created to include a cross-section of parents that will be comprised mostly of three representatives from each school building to meet periodically throughout the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. And the purpose of this group is to discuss curriculum and instruction, social-emotional learning, and the student experience, both in-person and remote. And Mr. Copeland may be able to speak a little more when we get to our board committee reports, as this was a genesis of our work with the Community Relations Committee. All right, and lastly, agenda items 15Z and agenda items 15AA speak to donations. So as we move into fully remote or hybrid learning experiences, we recognize that there are students in our community who are in need of technology to assist with their learnings from home. Our reopening plan refers to this as the digital divide, and as a school district, we are required to address this divide, and it's something we want to address. So agenda item 15Z speaks to and sincerely thanks Mawa Champions for the Children, which is a local community organization who understood this need and is working to provide technology to children in our local area through donations and volunteer opportunities in order to provide computer hardware and software capability to promote children's access to their required scholastic experiences. Dr. D. Pasqual and Mr. Lockwood both have backgrounds in technology. They happen to be in our audience. Welcome. Thank you for being here and have led efforts to receive technology device donations, which are then prepared and cleared for our kids. Approximately 30 devices have already been donated to the district, and our technology team is in the process of identifying families and conducting building leadership who need this technology the most. The devices will be in the homes of students to support our online learning platforms and initiatives. And to donate portable technology and devices, we ask that our community review this organization's website that is found in our reopening plan. So we thank Dr. D. Pasqual and Mr. Lockwood for taking on this initiative. It's more than just an initiative. Dr. D. Pasqual set up a tent outside of Mawa High School. I sat out there and retrieved laptops. It's not just getting the laptops, it's cleaning them out, making them ready for our kids, and we really appreciate that. It was a grassroots effort that came from a really sincere place. So thank you. Agenda item 15AA highlights Mr. Duffield, who is a resident of Mawa as well and a parent in our school district. He served as the Safety, Health, and Environmental Manager for Nestle Nespresso USA. And just recently, Mr. Duffield was able to secure 30 Apple iPads from his company, Nespresso, that will be in the hands of our students, and we thank Mr. Duffield too for his thoughtfulness in serving as a partner to our district. So while we recognize that these efforts do come from an authentic place with no expectations and spotlight, these gentlemen highlight what it means as a community that we are truly in this together, and I think that right now, more than ever, we need to be reminded of that over and over again. We would like to provide these gentlemen with small mentions of appreciation as we honor them with, we have framed Mawa Mercy letters like this. And also, we had pens and scribes that had the Mawa logo, and we obviously placed them bags, a whole bunch of Mawa swag. So Dr. Fitz and I will say that with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fair, for that report, and thank you very much for all the donations. We really, truly appreciate it. All right, I have a report this evening. Just call it up on my phone here. Mr. John Pascal, principal of the Mawa High School, announced today that the following, or announced the other day, that the following students have been named commended students in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. Joshua T. Bernstein, Matthew A. Brand, Jenna H. Han, Kristi Porcolakis, Joanna Lee, Varun U. Patel, Matthew D. Seguaria, Pruti C. Shah, Sophia M. Smith, Kyle S. Springer, Yeti Z., and Jessica H. Zheng. Approximately 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2021 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 50,000 scorers of more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2021 competition by taking the 2019 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. So those being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential academic success, commented a spokesperson for the NMSSB. These students represent a valuable national resource. Recognizing their accomplishments, as well as the key role their schools play in their academic development, is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success. So congratulations on this important accomplishment, and we wish you continued success in the future. And the other, a little bit of information I'd like to share with you, again, Mr. John Pascal, principal of the Mawa High School. Is proud to announce that two members of the class of 2021 have been designated National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Oliver J. Wang and Zachary S. Hawke are the recipients of this honor. They have been named as members of the top 16,000 students from the original pool of 1.5 million juniors who took the PSAT in 2019. Officials of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation announced the names of approximately 16,000 semifinalists in the 66th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 7,600 National Merit Scholarships worth more than $30 million that will be offered next spring. To be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements advanced to finalist level of the competition. Over 90% of the semifinalists are expected to attain finalist standing. The more, and more than half of the finalists will win a National Merit Scholarship, earning the Merit Scholar title. So congratulations to Oliver and Zachary on this wonderful achievement. And that is my report for this evening. Yes, Mr. Bleeker.
One item that I forgot to mention during my report, a follow-up item as a superintendent search. Another aspect of that will be a survey that is going to be sent out to the community that's expected to go out sometime later next week. And we'll share with the community a one whole message on how to participate in that. Again, that's related to superintendent search that I did not mention earlier.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bleeker. Okay, board committee reports. Do we have any board committee reports this evening? Mr. Copeland.
I'll be quick. I'll just jump on what Dennis had reported on the parent advisory council. I wanted to thank Dennis for spearheading this. This is something that the Community Relation Committee discussed a couple of weeks ago, came up on the mission statement, and quite honestly, Dennis took it and ran with it. So thank you, Dennis. We're looking forward to the meeting next week. We also want to thank Dr. Fitz for his support for this committee, as well as all of the volunteer parents that have been asked to participate. These are all volunteers who are taking time out of their day to help us, and our hope is that this is a fruitful committee that we will be able to continue beyond the school year. So Dennis, thank you again, and we'll report next meeting and let everyone know how that meeting went.
Fantastic. Do you have any other committee reports for this evening?
I was waiting for Mr. Gallo. All right, instruction and curriculum. I just want to give an update on some things that started over the summer in a preliminary fashion and things that we're continuing to work on. So over the summer, there were some preliminary conversations with members of our community and Dr. Dittoro, myself, Mr. Fair, and we started having some conversations about looking at certain issues related to diversity, equality, inclusion, things like that in our school district. So we decided that we would kind of have some preliminary meetings. Mr. Copeland, also a member of Community Relations, joined us, and Dr. Fitz, when he joined the district. And we've had two or three meetings, basically just talking about pieces related to some of these themes. One of the things that we were waiting for and hopeful of is that we would be able to use the strategic plan and the Mawa blueprint as a jumping off point once that was approved by the board. And very not surprisingly, that was approved by the board last week, in our last meeting, two weeks ago. So we're now at a point of perhaps expanding this group. We, I think they've named it the Mawa Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion Council. Members of central administration, myself, Mr. Copeland, members of our school community. And I think they're going to now, Dr. Dittoro has also invited some curriculum supervisors to this meeting, and perhaps principals and other representatives. We're still kind of working that out. Anyway, so I just wanted to update the board that these are things that we're looking at. We're hoping to tie pieces of this to the elements of the strategic plan, which is again our guiding force. And we do have a few members of the community here, and they are going to share a few words at the end during public participation. So just wanted to update the board as to where we were. Thanks.
Okay. Policy has six policies on tonight's agenda for first reading. The first one is policy 1620 Administrative Employee Employment Contracts. This policy has been revised in response to a recent New Jersey appellate court case that involved public notice and hearing requirements for an administrative contract that is rescinded or terminated by the board before it is due to expire and the parties agree to new employment terms. A board of education, Nottingberg County, rescinded an existing superintendent's contract and provided the superintendent with a new contract, but did not provide public notice or have a public hearing. This actually was challenged, and the appellate court decided that public notice and hearing is required under these circumstances. As a result, policy guide 1620 has been revised to require a public notice and hearing in addition to abolishing the superintendent salary caps and several other revisions related to abolishing the salary caps. Next policy on our agenda is policy 2431. This is athletic competition, and there's a regulation that goes along with that, 2431-1, Emergency Procedures for Sports and Other Athletic Activity. This policy and regulation has been revised based on a new law that requires the school districts that include any of the grades 6 through 12 to establish and implement an emergency action plan for responding to a serious or life-threatening sports-related injury sustained while participating in sports and other athletic activities. The plan is required to be revised annually and updated as necessary. The title of the regulation has been revised to align with the language from the new law and outlines all requirements placed on the school districts. The next one is policy and regulation 5330.05, Seizure Action Plan. Policy and regulation 5330.05 have been developed to address the requirements of a new law that outlines the school district's responsibility in caring for students with epilepsy and seizure disorders. The new policy and regulation requires that a parent of a student with epilepsy and seizure disorders submit the student's seizure action plan developed by a physician on an annual basis to the school nurse. The seizure action plan is a comprehensive document that includes information regarding the student's seizure history and treatment. The school nurse shall then develop an individualized healthcare plan and an individualized emergency healthcare plan for the student and is updated annually. The new law also requires the school district to coordinate epilepsy and seizure disorder care at the school and ensure that all staff are trained in the care of students with epilepsy and seizure disorder, including staff working with the school-sponsored programs outside the regular school day. The next one is policy 6440, Cooperative Purchasing. This policy has been revised to reflect changes that govern the public school contract law, cooperative purchasing, and joint purchases by school districts. There was, there were language changes that included updated definitions for lead agency, registered members, cooperative purchasing system, and joint purchasing system. Language was also removed from this policy that was redundant. The last one is policy 7450, Property Inventory. This policy was revised to more accurately reflect the definitions of equipment and supply. The revised policy also includes language to make distinctions when recording property inventory in the district. Also, an outdated New Jersey administrative code citation was removed. That's it. That's it.
Thank you, John.
Do we have any other?
Good. Sorry about that. So in the Twitter feed, Danielle Paulway had two posts math about Math League, and she concluded her post with sort of a string of the mathematical plus and subtraction and division and so on. So, I just wanted to highlight that because she is a person who is on fire with math, and her use of the nomenclature of math and highlighting, this was about a post about Math League and that there are forty eight students in the district despite the pandemic are going full hard on with Math League. And it's a shout out basically to Danielle and to the forty eight students who are doing, who are participating in Math League this year. But the other thing I wanted to talk about was Pepe Gardner. And at the end of Pepe Gardner's, when we get these resignation letters, it's in the package to the board members. But at the end of her resignation letter to the board, she had some very complimentary things to say specifically about Dennis, but I think she probably could have said that about any of her colleagues. So I don't mean to, no, I don't mean it that way. I just don't want to. I think what she was reflecting was, yes, your unique contribution to her, but also to the fact that so many, see, she said this. Thank you, Dennis, for all you do, you make a difference. And don't, isn't that the best thing that we can be said about any of us? And I'm reminded in Dr. Fitz's opening remarks about all the people who have to make our district work, and they are making a difference. And I just wanted to recognize them and that this staff member who's left us, you know, is one of those people that every day came in to make a difference in our students' lives. And especially in these trying times, you know, the people are doing that every single day is remarkable, and it's something we should have a lot of gratitude for. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to embarrass Dennis, and I don't think I broke any confidentiality with Pepe, but I think it was just worth noting that, that this is so important. So. It's my Hallmark card, but I always get moved by those, those retirement letters that have those personal comments. So. Thank you, Dennis, and thank you to all your colleagues. I will mute myself.
Okay, there we go. I think I'm good. Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to move on old business? Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. De Silva. Please take roll call.
Mr. Coe. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yeah.
Ms. Conoco.
Ms. Conoco.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Right, now I have new business, A, hold on, it's open, sorry. New business, A through A A may have a motion to proceed on that. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Conoco. Would we have any remarks or comments on any of those items before we proceed?
Just another thank you to the people involved in donations between Nespresso and Champions for Children. What a, what a, what a great, what a great commentary on our, on a very cool.
Most definitely. Thank you. Okay, could you please take roll call on those items, Mr. Bleecker?
Mr. Coe. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco. Dr. Morthee.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Now I'd like to speak, new business personnel, A through N, may have a motion to proceed on those items. Ms. Coe, second by Dr. Morthee. Do you have any comments on any of the items you may report numbers before we proceed? There we go. Mr. Bleecker, would you please take roll call?
Mr. Coe. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Do we have public questions or comments? Now, this section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. May I please have a motion to open to the public, Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. At this time, anyone would like to come forward or? Yes.
Just.
Just give us your name and your address, and if you're representing a group, I don't think you're in.
Yeah. Yeah. Pardon me. Just before you begin, there's one comment that did come through the chat. I just want to read that first. It's, it's a statement. Okay. Um, statement is from Miss Ruth Davis, employee of the district supervisor of instructional technology. Regarding number fifteen new business, other items, letter Z and A A, I would like to express my sincere thanks to Dr. De Pasqual, Mr. Lock, Mr. Duff, the generous donations. We're currently working to identify the best placement for this donated technology, and I'm excited at the progress we have made so far in collaborating with members of our special ed department to move ahead in providing assistive technology to meet the needs of our students. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Nadia Khan. I live at six ninety two Wyckoff Avenue in Mawa. I think you're supposed to give your address, but thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, if not, everyone knows where I live now. So, I am a mom of two beautiful children in the Mawa schools. They attend George Washington School. I am also a member of our newly formed Mawa Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. We are so excited to be here, myself and my colleagues, and we are really looking forward to partnering with the Board of Ed and with the rest of our committee to doing some amazing important work. Where basically, we are a group of Mawa parents and residents who are passionate about creating a community of tolerance, respect and equity in our children's school. We are inspired to take action to ensure that Mawa students have an educational experience that addresses inequality but also promotes diversity and inclusion for all of our students. We honor the beautiful uniqueness of each individual, and we embrace diverse backgrounds, values and points of view to build a strong, inclusive community that prepares every single one of our students for life in a twenty first century multicultural society. We'd like to ensure that equitable, diverse curricula are incorporated in all of our Mawa public schools that includes and centers the experience of historically marginalized communities, including, but not limited to, race, class, sex, gender, sexuality, physical or mental ability, age, religion, national origin or ethnicity and immigration status. In short, if I could say, we want to create a community or help to build on the wonderful community we have where every Mawa student feels seen and represented in the school community that they very proudly call their own. And on that, we want to thank the Board of Ed, the members of our community that we've been working with, Dr. Fitz, Mr. Copeland, Dr. Morthee, Dr. Dittoro, Mr. Fair, and all the members of the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Council for your support and your partnership. We can't wait to continue doing some wonderful work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name's Janine Ting Jansen. I live at one two nine East Slope Road in Mawa, just to be sure. I am a parent. I have three young children at Betsy. I've had active conversations about diversity with our principal, with some of the teachers and many of you, and I'm very excited to be here to continue that conversation with the work we're doing on behalf of the council. For myself, I have fourteen years of HR experience. I am a senior director of inclusion and diversity, so diversity is near and dear to my heart, and I, I show that in my professional and personal life and volunteer a lot with our youth and just help first gen students attend college. So that's, that's my calling. That's what I'd like to do, and I'm really excited to be here and support this effort with our council. Part of our objectives are aligned to the key tenets of the strategy of the plan that was just approved, and we're pleased that we already focuses on many of the tenants that we hold passionate, and our goals are to strengthen the plan with all of the expertise from the parents, the board, and all of our administrators, because we know that it's our core values of supporting respect, determination that we have, and we want to support our students to be successful. And with that, we would like to align with the curriculum and instruction efforts, enhance the K to twelve academic curriculum to offer greater diversity of perspective, specifically from historically marginalized community. As a society, we have an opportunity there, and as a school, I'd really like to see us move forward, and I think we have a great opportunity to do so with the plan. Social and emotional wellness is another key tenet, and we want to improve the social emotional support around racism and education for justice, and we're looking forward to having this conversation. Lastly, in our community connections, we want to help the community, support these relationships, create an environment that is welcoming and affirming for all, particularly for these students of this community. So we're excited to be working together in partnership and solidarity and really just to have a positive impact in our community. So as parents, we're here to volunteer, offer ourselves with our expertise, and really just have more conversations around this really important topic. So we thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Barcella, and I reside at one Babett Bridge Road in Mawa. So I just want to start off by saying that I echo the sentiments of my colleagues on this council, and I'm very proud to be part of this exciting initiative. While historically marginalized communities have, have made significant progress over the years, I think we all just sort of admit that there's still more work to do. So I fundamentally believe that the inclusion of positive diverse perspectives in our curriculum, literature and media will help raise awareness and create an inclusive culture where all students feel welcomed and celebrated for their individual uniqueness. And there are many benefits of a diverse and inclusive education. As you all educators know, students become more empathetic. They gain a better understanding of history, people. They become more open-minded, feel more confident and safe, and are ultimately better prepared for a diverse workplace. As a Mawa mom of three young kids, they attend GW and Joyce Comer, who have roots in the Caribbean and American South and as a corporate professional in the field of learning and development, it's important to me that our children have equal opportunity to flourish, to thrive and reach their God-given potential in a nurturing environment. So with that said, Janine and I are super pleased to be part of the Parent Advisory Committee, working in partnership with all of you. And we will keep our council informed as we continue to make progress on our mutual objectives. Welcome the input of members of the community as we help bring the Strategic Plan to life. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else on our chat, Mr. Bleecker? No?
No, Ms. Barron, no more question and answers in our chats. I do not see of those members of the public attending Zoom. No hands raised for questions or comments. So, okay, to.
Okay, may I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. Copeland, second by Dr. Morthee. Okay, I'm the motion to recess to executive session. Mr. De Silva, second by Ms. Conoco. We're going to be ending the meeting after our, our executive session. No actions going to be taken at the executive session, so everyone is free to leave unless you'd like to sit around and watch us come back. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate our nice assistance and the live people in the audience. Everyone stay healthy. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Barron, we're going to, we, we will end the meeting as well for those that are logged on electronically. Again, no action to be taken after the end of the session. Thank you.